Well, it is one o'clock, so everyone can stand. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Garmin. Who was that? Okay, motion or second by Wacter. Uh, okay, any discussion on the agenda? Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Name. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, discussion decision, public hearing on proposed property tax levy for FY twenty-five, twenty-six. I'll need a motion to open the public hearing. Some of... Motion by Wacter.
A second.
Second by Garmin. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? If not all in favor, say aye. Excuse me, roll call vote.
Aye.
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes. Your motion passes unanimous. And the public hearing is open, so we will read the notice of public hearing here first and then we'll open it up for public comment. When we do make public comment, I would ask that you come up to the podium here and, and address the board, state your name, and then you can, can share your, your comments that you have. Okay, uh, notice of public hearing, proposed property tax levy, Cassuth County, fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, county number fifty-five. The county board of supervisors will conduct a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year county tax asking as follows. Meeting date, three twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, meeting time, one o'clock PM. Meeting location, board of supervisors, meeting room, Cassuth County Courthouse, one fourteen West State Street, Algonah, Iowa, five zero five one one. At the public hearing, any resident or taxpayer may present objections to or arguments in favor of the proposed tax levy. After the hearing of the proposed tax levy, the board will publish notice and hold a hearing on the proposed county budget. And these are the numbers from the Iowa Department of Management. Taxable valuations for general services. Current year certified property tax for FY twenty-four, twenty-five is one million, six hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred fifty-two thou- what, excuse me, one billion, six hundred forty-one million, six hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. For budget year FY twenty-five, twenty-six is one billion, seven hundred thousand, one hundred and fif- excuse me, one billion, seven hundred million, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. Budget year proposed tax for FY twenty-five, twenty-six is one billion, seven hundred million, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. The requested tax dollars countywide rates except debt service is nine million, six hundred three thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. The budget year effective tax, twenty-five, twenty-six, is nine million, six hundred three thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. The budget year proposed tax FY twenty-five, twenty-six is one, excuse me, is ten million, fifty-seven thousand, forty-one dollars. Taxable valuations debt service. Current year certified property tax for twenty-four, twenty-five is one billion, six hundred seventy-one million, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars. The budget year effective tax for twenty-five, twenty-six is one billion, seven hundred fifty million, three hundred sixty-nine thousand, and sixty-eight dollars. The budget year proposed tax for twenty-five, twenty-six is one billion, seven hundred fifty thousand, three hundred sixty-nine- seven hundred fifty million, three hundred sixty-nine thousand, and sixty-eight dollars. Requested tax dollars for debt service. Current year certified property tax is zero dollars. Budget year effective tax, twenty-five, twenty-six, is zero dollars. Budget year proposed tax, twenty-five, twenty-six, is zero dollars. Requested tax dollars countywide rates. Uh, for current year certified property tax FY twenty-four, twenty-five is nine million, six hundred three thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. The budget year effective tax for FY twenty-five, twenty-six is nine million, six hundred three thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. The budget year proposed tax for FY twenty-five, twenty-six is ten million, fifty-seven thousand, and forty-one dollars. The tax rate countywide is five point eight five zero zero zero. The budget year effective tax for FY twenty-five, twenty-six is five point six four eight six nine. The budget year proposed tax for FY twenty-five, twenty-six is five point nine one three, five three five. Taxable valuations for rural services. Current year certified property tax twenty-four, twenty-five is one billion, two hundred fifty-six million, five hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. The budget year effective tax for FY twenty-five, twenty-six is one billion, three hundred and eight million, six hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars. The budget year proposed tax FY twenty-five, twenty-six is one billion, three hundred and eight million, six hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars. The requested tax dollars additional rural levies for current year certified property tax is one million, nine hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred twenty-seven dollars. Budget year effective tax, twenty-five, twenty-six, is one million, nine hundred forty-six thousand, two, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The budget year proposed tax for twenty-five, twenty-six is two million, seven thousand, twenty-five dollars. The tax rate for rural additional, eh, for the current certified property tax year is one point five four nine zero two. The budget year effective tax for twenty-five, twenty-six was one point four eight seven three seven. The budget year proposed tax for FY twenty-five, twenty-six is one point five three three six eight. The rural total then for the current year certified property tax is seven point three nine nine zero two, with the budget year effective tax, twenty-five, twenty-six, being seven point one three six oh six. And the budget year proposed tax FY twenty-five, twenty-six being seven point four four nine zero three. Next, we have the tax rate comparison, the current versus proposed. Uh, a residential property with an actual assessed valuation of a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and ten thousand dollars as, as the example. Uh, for an urban taxpayer, the current year certified property tax FY twenty-four, twenty-five is two hundred and seventy-one dollars. Budget year proposed tax FY twenty-five, twenty-six, three hundred and nine dollars. Percent change, fourteen point zero two percent. Rural taxpayer, current year certified property tax FY twenty-four, twenty-five is three hundred and forty-three dollars. Budget year proposed tax FY twenty-five, twenty-six is three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Percent change, thirteen point four one percent. Tax rate comparison, current versus proposed on a commercial property, a commercial property, yep, with an actual assessed valuation of three hundred to three hundred and thirty thousand. For an urban taxpayer, the current year certified property tax FY twenty-four, twenty-five is one thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Budget year proposed tax for FY twenty-five, twenty-six is one thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Percent change is fifteen point two percent. For a rural taxpayer, current year certified property tax FY twenty-four, twenty-five being one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. The budget year proposed tax FY twenty-five, twenty-six being one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Percent change, fourteen point eight one percent. Note that the actual assessed valuation is multiplied by a rollback percentage to get the taxable valuation to calculate property taxes. Residential and commercial properties have the same rollback percentage at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, actual assessed valuation. The proposed property taxes assume a ten percent increase in property values for the year as a comparison to the current year. Reasons for tax increase if proposed exceeds the current increase in tort liability and health insurance, ongoing costs from House File seven eighteen. Thanks for bearing with me as we read all that, and, uh, um, if any clarification on any of those numbers is somebody was writing down or anything, just feel free to ask, but otherwise, we will, um, entertain any public comment at this time. Don't all jump at once.
I'm Richard Miller.
Good morning.
Um, you guys are spending, if you didn't have the eight to nine million dollar surplus, you might be a little more. But you guys are like a teenager with a credit card and no job. You spend and then you expect us taxpayers to bail you out, which it seems every year. And you need to stop handing out the feel-good money. The grandstands are a great cause, but they need to be funded by people that are using them. They're not the, what the taxpayers of Cassuth County really need. And like I say, if you didn't have the eight or nine million dollars, you, you wouldn't say, oh, we can find that in our budget. And, uh, if you guys had to put your checkbooks on your desk here every day when you're in here and you vote to give out money that's not needed and wanted and useful or makes the most priority for taxpayers, at the end of the day, you could just sign the check and however much you spent, we could just deduct it from your accounts. That's what you're doing to us. Okay. Um, in, we need to start line item, items too, like the Washington is doing. We're just as bad as they are. Uh, we've got an agreement. We had it with the county workers and we started making them pay some health insurance. Good idea. Should've started years ago. But I talked to the engineer's office. They've got an agreement with the bait and they sprayed sap on the road for dust control. They have the agreement. We can't change that. Oh, we can change that, and we should be changing that. Just because that got an agreement from the past doesn't mean it goes forward. And the road mowing that didn't happen last summer, they were still mowing county blacktops the day after Christmas. Now, somebody didn't do their job right in keeping the, ahead of, on an average year, that wouldn't have happened. And I've heard talk, hopefully you've changed your mind, about taxation of the windmills in the future borrowing against that. That's another bad idea. J.G. Wentworth is more accurate than borrowing from windmill possibilities of tax. Those windmills are gonna make us so much money when they put 'em up that we weren't gonna need taxes anymore. We were gonna be out of trouble. We're in deeper now than we were twenty years ago.
Thank you.
So, ma'am, it's Tom Sing. And I guess I wanna start with, if you look at this board, there's a lot of experience on this board, a lot of board experience. And last year, a little history. Uh, the budget was a fiasco. We tried to straighten it out, and you gave it all back. You gave it all back. After you had it once, you gave it all back, which became a fiasco, which ended up costing us taxpayers. So, in the three years, the last three years, we've had an increase in budget three out of three years on this board. Granted, some of you are new. Almost a year ago, so I come in here every year, every year, nothing changes. Why do I come in here? I have no idea. One thing I will say, kind of, you're on record as saying you would get this handled. Go to March twenty-sixth of last year, onto the, at an hour and two, and you said, if I don't correct this budget, by next year, I won't come back. You're on record as saying that, and I said I would hold you to it, and you did not do it. You have an increase again this year. That's not correcting the budget. We cannot be borrowing money with TIF, which puts a loan on me, by the way. That's my loan, not, that's the county loan. And then donating money to grandstands. That's ridiculous. In my mind, that's taxation without representation. Do you ask your people if they want that? I've never gotten a phone call from you. In fact, you don't even return my calls anymore. Very disappointing. And I, and I'm pretty sure Kyle will tell you that's the case, unless he calls you to tell you, you don't call me back. I question why I'm in here every time, because I can sit up here and we can do this, and I know what's gonna happen. The minute I walk away, you're gonna do what you wanna do. But we're the taxpayers. We're the ones that control your job, and I told you I would hold you to it if you didn't do your job. And I'm holding you to it. I'm very disappointed in all of you, but he had the guts to go on record and say he would do it, and you didn't do it. I wish the rest of you would do that. I wish you'd, uh, say it publicly that you will correct this budget or you will not be back, because that's your job. That's what we expect you to do. That's all I got. Go check that out. I'm holding you to it.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mary Reed, and I have a simple thing. My land value is going down. How come my taxes are going up? And I guess one of the things I'd like to know also is, do you have somebody that checks over everything you do? Do the board of supervisors have somebody that looks over the money they spend outside of us? And I'd like to know, okay, when they spray the roads, what determines what roads get sprayed? There are three questions, so are you, you can ask, answer them later.
What was your second question again? I was writing it down.
Pardon?
What was your second question again?
My second question-
Oh, oh, right, yep, 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 sorry. Okay, thank you. We'll get those answered. Anyone else for public comment?
I'm John Nash, and, uh, I have a question. I was mailed, just came in the mail last week. And, uh, looking into your mileage, and I figured out the dollars difference between your, your proposed budget and last year's levy. Follow what I'm saying, and last year's levy was a total of twenty-one, one, five, three, seven, six, seven. As a urban and rural combined. This year is twenty-two, one, two, one, one, zero, seven. Difference of nine hundred and seventies- nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, three hundred and forty dollars. Is that the actual increase in?
That, that's an increase in valuation and you're, you're adding the bottom together on the other page?
It's valuation increase, correct?
Valuation increase and the tax rate.
So, if you didn't change your mileage at all, which you did, taxes would go up. Let me, I'm just trying to make that clear to everybody.
Yep.
But I have one other thing to bring up here. Last year, I was heading here and I didn't say anything. And all I heard was how the state did this to you and the state did that to you. Granted, you guys weren't here. Well, you were here, but you weren't sitting there, but in two thousand twenty-two, let's go back it up. Over the years, mental health fund, Cassuth County spent anywhere between, the low I could find was about four hundred and fifty thousand to, the highest I found was a mil- little over a million dollars. That was actually taxed on your tax form over those year period between two thousand fifteen and two thousand eighteen. That's the last figures I have. Anyhow, back in two thousand twenty-two, the state of Iowa took that burden of the mental health fund off the county's back. They took over a hundred percent of the payments, which freed up quite a few dollars that were being taxed on your tax form. If you look on your tax form now, you won't find a mental health fund on your taxes. Like, years ago, there was a tax for mental health. And like I said, some years it was up to a million dollars, or I think on the average around seven hundred thousand, which came out of the taxpayer dollars to pay for the mental health. The state took that over completely. So, granted, the state might've done a few tweaks on the other end last year in twenty-two, twenty-three for you guys, but they took a big burden off your back from the mental health side. So, I just want you to know that, uh, and people here to know that there was a big shift from our tax dollars paying for mental health versus the state taking care of it a hundred percent.
Can you take note of that so we can respond to some of that?
Yep, yep, yep.
So, that freed up a lot of money that was always being taxed, but our taxes continued to go up big time last year. I'm just wondering why.
Good question, yep. Thank you, Don. Anyone else for public comment?
I should be quiet, but I'm not gonna be. Charlie doesn't though. I guess I farm and I run a business on top of farming. And what percentage of rural tax actually pays our? What pays our taxes are the budget.
Pretty good chunk of it.
I think it's around eighty-five percent. I'm pretty sure.
That, we'll, we'll have all those numbers at the regular budget here.
And I guess, I kinda keep wondering why it always comes back to farmland all the time that runs this county. I mean, there's getting to be fewer and fewer of us, but the farm ground always takes it in the end, it seems like, and we pay for everything from the school to the, you name it. There's a few things that I see a concern with, and it's no different than I see in my farming operation. Usually whenever your, your, uh, budget is out of control, the first thing you look at is machinery. That's the first thing you look at. What can we get by with? This county's got some ungodly amount of machinery right now. And the last week, it kinda shows that it doesn't matter if it's new or used, it still wrecks all the same. We've been a little hard on it this week. And if, you can laugh, it ain't very funny. I've been on the end of that, on ownership side, and, uh, it's always funny that I see that the vehicles and the, and the maintainers and it's always a certain brand. I don't think we've priced out very much to try to save a buck. I really don't. I mean, Caterpillar seems to be a pretty fancy name in this world, and I think you guys all know that. And I, I can't believe that that's the best deal every single time, but we pay for that. And I think you guys all know we pay for it. Other than that, I guess I don't have a lot to say. I kinda agree. I mean, our employees need to be paid. I run a business, I explain, I, I deal with that all the time. I deal with medical insurance all the time. I've seen it where the medical insurances came in and basically wiped off the raise that we've given them. Uh, I've been employed since nineteen ninety. I ran a business since nineteen ninety, had as many as seven hundred and fifty people under me, so I understand that quite well. But, uh, sometimes it's not always employee friendly, and employees have to realize that too, that we're all in this together. Farming's not real friendly right now, but we're still gonna take a tax increase like crazy, even though we're not really making any money. But we're still gonna have to pay our taxes, but we don't have a choice. So, I don't know. I think there's a lot of ways we can save money. I seen it just in a road crossing here a while ago, eighty-seven thousand, it didn't seem like it was a big deal, it was just, oh, we didn't wanna bump in the road. Uh, we got a board under the road. We could've saved eighty-seven thousand in a blink of a minute, and I don't know why we don't take advantage of some of that stuff. Because I had eighty-seven thousand over a half a dozen times, it adds up quite a bit. And then we're gonna, on that si- situation, two hundred feet down the road, we're gonna dip through the road anyway. Do we really care if there was a bump in that road? On that blacktop, if anybody drove, there's a bump in that road every half mile. And I don't know why we're so wasteful, I guess. To me, that's just being totally wasted. So, I guess that's my piece, but I do think we should try to get this thing balanced out somehow. I don't think we should have to do an increase every single time. That's my piece.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dick Miller again. It's almost the end of the, our tax season. We're gonna start, we're taking in taxes. I'd like you guys to find out exactly what the fund balance is right now. That way, when we have our, our meeting for the proposed budget, you know, and you need fifty percent, I'd like to know how much is in the treasury right now. And when the last time we dipped very low into that treasury, I don't need another savings account with my name on it.
Twenty-five percent is, is the threshold that you shoot for.
I would like to know how much we have used in the last two years and how mu- what it is about now.
Sure, well, we can get that for you. Okay, anyone else for public comment? If not, we can answer some questions here then, uh, that have been raised. Okay, uh, in response to, to Dick Miller's questions, as far as the sap on the road for abate, I, I guess I wasn't really aware of that. That's something I'd have to ask about. So, I, to be honest, I-
I asked last year why we keep doing it. We have an agreement. That was the end of discussion.
Okay, well, we can, we can certainly look into that. That's about all I can tell you today on that, but, uh, as far as the fund balances, I don't know if I have that written down here. We, we can certainly get, get those here for you.
I don't think I have, but we can print them off randomly once. If you wanna come to the auditor's office-
We can get that for you, but as far as public information today.
They're not available?
Yeah, you can put-
Today? You can't tell us what they're-
No, we're gonna, we're gonna tell you. I'm here today. Just give us one second here.
You want the fund balances right now?
Oh, well, it's-
Have them month in, so it would be-
Didn't we have the-
End of February is what they would be.
Yeah. For this year or for- You, which ones does he want? The projected ones?
You want projected for the budget or right now?
Right now, before taxes started coming in.
Well, there's a difference between what's budgeted and what's actually in the checking account. Okay, then you have to go to the treasurer's office, because he's the one that handles the checking accounts. So, if you wanna know exactly what's in the checking accounts, he can give you a better number than that.
Okay, could we give the fund balances though?
Mm-hmm, yep.
As of the end of February?
Yep.
If you want today, we wouldn't have today, but it's, it's done at month end.
Be closed, yep.
And so it'd be the end of February. We do have that.
Close Wisconsin and your names.
Um, yeah, well, I'll let Tammy pull that up and we'll go to some other-
All right.
Comments and come back to that. Uh, as far as, uh, Tom's, Tom Sing's comments, and I, I'll go back and look at the video, uh, as far as what the context of that conversation was, and-
It's gonna bite.
And, well, and, and there were things, I didn't vote to put all back last year either, but that is what happened. Um, and, I mean, I think a lot of, a lot of you were able to follow along with some of the public discourse last year, but, yeah, I, I can go back and look at that video.
So, here regardless, it's a bad beginning this year.
Well, and I think the board as a whole can address this year, um, was speaking specifically to that, but as far as this year goes as to why dollars are going up, we have about a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase in total property tax dollars requested by the county. Is that my, am I correct in that about? Okay.
That, that second line on, um, the chart of what part you're at. The-
Yep.
Current, uh, requested tax dollars countywide rates except debt service, nine, six, oh, three, six, seventy, in comparison to the proposed budget of ten, zero, five, seven, zero, four, one. That actually comes out to just shy of a five percent increase in gross tax dollars. So, the comparisons that are laid out at the bottom half of that sheet are assuming valuation increases, which could go to your question as well. If, if your land value is going down, the numbers on the sheet are not gonna represent your actual tax bill. So, there is some confusion around that. Statewide, that's not just a Cassuth County situation.
So, that means next year they'll, they'll?
It depends on your val- the, the taxes are based off of a mileage rate times your valuation. So, if your valuation goes down, it, it depends on-
I don't think, I don't think, her valuation isn't going down. I think she's talking about if you sold your land, your price is going down. Is that correct?
Well, my land is not valued the same today as it was two months ago.
Based on the coun- based on the county or based by, like, what?
Based on what? Like an appraiser or our county?
I think it's by the state.
I'm guessing the county didn't take your valuation down. Looks like they took it up.
Well, the valuation countywide is going up, but individuals within that could be plus or minus. That's your individual partial.
And once our values are set, they're set until valuation time again, which would be in the fall, um, which starts with the assessor, and then, you know, it comes to the auditor. And that valuation process gets finished as of January one, um, and they're final. But as far as, you know, just changing the values all the time, that, that's not happening.
Yeah.
Not here.
And part of the, part of the reason, or a large part of the reason why property valuations countywide have gone up so much is we have a lot of new, uh- is we have a lot of new, uh, new tax base coming online, even from the wind turbines. And that's, that's a portion of that going from zero to, to taxable value and, and climbing up that step.
I don't think those would be on the, um, values that are listed here because those are pulled out separately. So our base value is set and that would stay in here, but the new value would go into the tip.
That wouldn't count towards.
I don't believe so.
No, it's, it's separate. If you get like a, a copy of all the taxable valuations,
Sure.
the tips are all listed separately.
Okay.
By their taxing district.
Yep.
So, so the tip, all the windmill money is gonna be in its own little kitty off to the side. So you're gonna take five hundred thousand dollar increase here, plus five hundred thousand dollars worth of the first year of the windmills too. So you've got a million dollar increase for, uh, the twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, in, in, uh, in your budget.
So, I guess, let me, let me do a quick explanation on TIF. The basis of that is, um, it's, I mean, there's, there's a lot of reasons behind any sort of TIF use across the state. But what you do there is you set your base value, whether it's a wind turbine or a business, say there's a business going up on a fair piece of land, the land's worth fifty thousand and the new business is gonna be two hundred thousand. You set your base value of what's already there and that fifty would stay on all of your current levies. But then the two hundred that'd be new would be in the TIF and that's taxed separately. There are certain levies that are protected that you cannot pull that money separately. But, um, the big one, which is on all of your taxes right now, would be your schools. Your, you might have fifty percent plus or minus wherever you live, of your property taxes that goes towards the school districts. That is one of the big ones that's pulled out and is isolated. But what you have to do for TIF, if you have something in an urban renewal area for taxing, for financing, you have to have debt before you can collect the taxes that those areas would bring in. So, some of it is.
Just a second, just a second. So we have to have debt before we were going to get any money from the windmills?
No, you have to have debt to be able to collect the taxes in a TIF area for an urban renewal area. So, if, if we have a, like this year, I wanna say for the wind turbines, it's four hundred and some thousand, plus a hundred and twenty-eight, I think, from Gold Eagle. So the total of that is rolled into our urban renewal area.
Which is all going to roads and potentially the. Most expensive grandstand in the country.
Roads and bridges.
Yeah, most of what's in that plan is roads and bridges right now.
Right.
But, but you have to.
Roads and bridges should be subtracted from the rest of the budget then, or?
That's part of the funding, so, the.
So it looks, I mean, uh, just a second.
Hang on, cause it'll, it'll be a, it'll, let me, let me finish what I'm trying to say there. So, but the process of how you collect those funds, you have to have debt outstanding first. And when we're projecting four hundred and some thousand for TIF funds coming in this year, you have to have debt that exceeds that or that revenue cannot be collected in its separate fund. How we use those funds is part of the budget as a whole, but you're not seeing that on this tax sheet because it is separated off into its own urban renewal.
But if we wouldn't have put it into a TIF, it would've showed up on this sheet, correct?
Correct, but one of the caveats.
So it's still another five hundred thousand dollars of income?
No, so, no, it's not. Well, it's, it, it would not directly translate because one of the caveats that we did talk about substantially last year is House File seven eighteen. What that did is it limited our total dollars that we could bring in under general basic and rural basic to roughly two percent growth. Um, there's, there's some stair steps in there and stuff.
Two point seven five occurring here, but two percent next year possible.
So, what that actually, what that's aiming at.
So by putting it, by putting it into the TIF, you can now raise ten percent valuation?
No, so what, what that is actually doing is, is driving down our levy rates on general basic and revenue. Both of those levies, the millage rates are going down. General supplemental is going up and that's a lot of health insurance and, well, health insurance, general property insurance. There is a separate code section of expenditures that qualify for general supplemental and that levy rate is currently not limited by the state. Uh, and it was not touched in the House File seven eighteen language. So if those wind turbines had not been TIF'd and had gone on the general, um, levy rates, that additional, um, valuation would not have resulted in the same increase in dollars.
Does this have our seventy-five cents on EMS in it also?
Yeah.
Yes, and that was one of the things, uh, in regards to what Don Vesh mentioned about mental health coming off. And Amber's got her levy rate sheet open there too.
The last year we paid mental health was, um, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. It was point two four one two six. Then there was a year, twenty-two, twenty-three, where there was nothing, but then twenty-three, twenty-four is when the additional, um, EMS came on.
Yep, so, um.
The mental health was passed into July of two thousand twenty-two. That's when the state took it over.
Yeah, twenty-two was the last year of Cassuth County levy for it.
And, and prior to that, the two years prior to that were right around forty-four cents per thousand and EMS is seventy-five. So, um, even if you go back to the fiscal year twenty-one or fiscal year twenty comparisons, EMS is still higher than the mental health levy that came off. So, that is one of the reasons that, um, taxes did increase. And that was, I think we all should know that was voted on by the people. Whether anyone in this room agrees with it or disagrees with it, um, it was voted on.
I get that, it was voted on, it was touted as this was going to be the cure-all for the EMS. And yet every year I'd watch them do their budget and they'd come in here and ask for more money, more money, and more money. And what's happening here? That isn't covering it and there's six percent increase in wages for them?
What do you mean they come in asking for more money?
Did, did you guys approve a six percent raise in wages for?
For the employees, yes, but they're, the tax dollars, the tax dollars that are being levied is not changing at all. That's a seventy-five.
You would have to vote on it.
It's not even covering what it was probably to cover anymore. And your earnings are past that.
But I don't agree with that statement.
Really?
No.
Is there a surplus in there?
That should be on that fund balance.
So, so.
There is a fund balance that has been aggressively built up over the last year or two as a service.
So is that where, is that where the wage increase comes from?
Yes, I mean, all, all the dollars that are coming into that service, part of them are tax dollars and part of it is revenue and, um, money that is earned for calls for service. So Medicare, Medicaid, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, all those insurance company private payers. There's other funds there as well that are contributing to that total budget.
So, so is the EMS staying the same because of the tax or, or is there other expenses that is coming because of that tax?
With the tax, yeah, I know. There's, there's not any other funds that the county is contributing besides just that tax rate. Because prior to that being established, and depending on how far back in history we wanna go here, but prior to that, the county was contributing funds to the city of Algonia to help support the cost of that service. Prior to that even, um, we were setting money aside for ambulance purchases around the county. We were still sending some money to the city of Algonia. But all of those funds that were part of the general budget are no longer there.
Okay.
That transitioned into the new levy.
So if they need new ambulance, it comes out of that tax, right?
Correct, yep, yep.
So, so there's another one, such as the, what Don was talking about. And I believe it is way north of a half million dollars you were giving out of your budget to the EMS that you no longer give because of the tax, am I, is that the way I understand that?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so there, there's some numbers here that are missing that you guys just keep raising and there's things you're not paying for anymore and that's the point I'm trying to get to is, I don't know where this ends.
Well, I think some of it, um, yeah, even though we, there's some things we're not paying for anymore, we used to be able to count on being able to pay for more things because we weren't limited by the state and our growth and our valuation and what we could levy for tax dollars. And so when that happened, um, two years ago, three years ago, I mean, looking at my levy sheet, when we maybe should've kept property taxes levies across the board the same or raised them when this was, the Senate file or House File seven eighteen was going through, uh, we lowered it. We lowered the levy, which was, which, you know, I'm talking for myself. If I, I feel that was a vital mistake that was made by the county because then, uh, we didn't capture some of those dollars that we typically would have. And so we kinda left a lot on the table. Yeah, it was nice that taxes were lowered, but now all of a sudden, we're at the point where everything's becoming more expensive.
Nobody felt, nobody felt their, I'm sorry.
No, Kay, will you just let me finish my thought and then, and then talk? Well, everything has become, um, more expensive, but yet we're not able to capture any more money for that, so we're starting to eat at our fund balances. When we start to eat at our fund balances and that becomes an issue, that's an issue, that's a big issue. And I, as much as, when I come on this board, I don't wanna raise taxes and I'm hoping that at some point it's going to come down. We're still, we're playing a little catch-up from things maybe that we should, we should've done a little differently, but I cannot, you know, we can't go backwards on that. But that's my thought, what were you going to say?
Nobody's ever felt that their taxes has gone down because if you're not messing with the millage, you're messing with the valuations. So, nobody's, and, 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 and I could go back and have Nick pull, I'm, I'm sure that my taxes, every, every year, the check that I write to the Nick Ram account, I'll call it, has not, has not been cheaper. So, it's more money, yeah.
Right.
Whether, whether it's the millage or whether it's the valuation, we have all wrote larger checks to the county and the county, the county's budget is, uh, it's like sailors are leaving. It, it's out of control. It, it's, it's totally out.
And, and I agree with what you're saying exactly. And the problem is my fund balances are going down and I have to manage my fund balances and I can sit in this room and tell you, you have to manage your fund balances the same as I do, but your fund balance is me. And I don't feel like you're giving us consideration a lot of times. I, I know we had this discussion about wages for employees and again, when you're paying employees sixty, seventy, a hundred thousand dollars and you give them a four percent increase, that is a huge number, that is compounded drastically.
When we're not getting four, six percent increase.
Yes, and, and these are the, these are the hard decisions I asked you to make last year, you didn't. I asked you to make them this year, not so much, it doesn't feel like. When you have almost a million dollar increase in budget, you didn't.
So can I ask, how much of an increase did you get in your wages this year?
Every county employee except for EMS is four percent and the sheriff.
I just know my social security check only got a couple dollars more. But my Medicare got a lot higher. And when is this all gonna quit? Do we all need to keep getting a raise? Do we all need, you know?
Mary, you don't get a raise.
So, so I guess the question is, can we go back and do work the budget and straighten this out at this point? Or, or are we just wasting our time here?
None of this is ever a waste of time. I, I mean, we are, we're trying to do our best and we want to hear from all of you. This, I would never consider, um, people coming in here a waste of time. No way, that's, that's not the case.
Can we expect changes then? Probably not, and that's my, that's my argument.
I've got another question. Um, when we have, let's say a drainage ditch cleanup and all of a sudden at the end of it, there's overruns. Hey, they bid the thing, these overruns get expensive and then a bridge. Well, the bridge didn't get completed in time because the guy's working on five bridges in the area. And we never imposed the penalty that's written right in there, we're gonna penalize you if you don't have it done on time. Well, the engineer's office says, well, we can't do that or they won't do business with us next time. I'm sorry, there are overruns and the non-completion dates, there's penalties. Why do we never stick to, that's your bid, that's what you're doing it for?
I guess the only thing I'll speak to on that is, um, like drainage projects in my district recently, have been very close to the prices that they have been bid at. I could give you more than one example of that. And we have held contractors responsible for timeliness of the work being done and the product of the work that's been done in my time on the board. And that's all I guess I'm gonna say.
But I've seen the bridges get cleared out and the guy snagged the pipes, bent the pipes. So he ordered all new pipes and the pipes get laid on his property. He bent them, it's not the county's fault.
I can't speak to any generalities in that regard, but I, I was just speaking to things I've done and seen in my time. I don't know if anyone else wants to respond.
Well, and when you're talking drainage issues, that's not necessarily, yes, it's, it's taxed, it's assessed money.
Sooner or later it comes out of the drain.
Correct, but that's, that's not necessarily pertaining to the general public's tax levies.
But you guys still can control that spending.
Yep, yep, absolutely. So those are good things, I'm just saying this is not, those are two different subjects there.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, coming back to the fund balances, we've got them pulled up here, I just wanna read them quick. What's that?
Well, we're gonna print a copy, Dick wanted a copy, right? We'll print a copy for him.
Sure.
I'd like to hear him.
I like to hear it, yeah.
Well, you can hear him, but then I'm gonna say you can add a copy when you leave if you wanna look at him.
This is out of February.
No, it'd be February twenty eighth.
End of, end of February, okay.
Can, can you send like twenty need to print to the printer and I'll?
It hasn't been printing there, I can try, but it hasn't.
Okay, well, wherever, wherever you wanna send them, I'll go get them and then Carter can read them while I'm going through them.
Did you say that TIF money is available to the road department?
So, what we, when we did the urban renewal area, you have to have a list of projects. What we put in the amendment for the urban renewal area was majority of road and bridge projects and then the grandstands was the other project that was listed.
So about machinery, can you go toward machinery?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, I.
I wouldn't think so.
I, I think it can, but I'm not a hundred percent confident on that right now.
You'd have to define it as ec- as economic development, which I'm not sure that a piece of machinery would.
Well, I just know the road department comes in here quite often asking for a lot of money for machinery. I've seen it a couple times where they forgot to order plows and boxes for cassettes they came in. And then that comes out of the tax money all the time and I guess I don't understand how all of a sudden we have a blank check for that all the time.
Cause last year he came in and got nine hundred thousand dollars that you, whatever you call the thing. That you, whatever you call the thing, updated the budget from this.
Amendment.
He told him he could get them, but he didn't have a dollar amount on him until twelfth hour and he shows up for nine hundred thousand and you guys go, we can't do anything with you.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
And I think we got a snow blower in that process right now a little bit.
Yeah, I guess that's, I'm, I don't know, we're. That's, that's one of the budgets in the general budget, of course, which does relate into the levies. But, um, currently what's in the budget is two million dollars for new equipment. And when I started on the board, it was six hundred thousand. So I guess that is one thing I've had a concern about.
Who, can, can I ask, so as a board, all your heads come in and, uh, they've all got wish lists and, and whatnot. You know, I, I guess this is, this is the way it, this is the way it works, uh, at, at Nutrient. I've got wish lists. I want this. I want that. But then I have to justify the fact that I need this project. Whether it's a new sprayer, whether it's a truck, whether it's whatever. So they look at the piece of equipment that you're either going to replace or the fact that you're going to bring in new business. There's a couple of different factors with it. But I can tell them all day long how great it's gonna be for this new piece of equipment. But without any, um, documentation, I mean, do, do you guys know how many miles go on a truck a year? Do you know how many dollars gets put into each individual, uh, piece of equipment? I mean, is there a piece that's junk that needs to go? It's costing too much? And do we have some equipment out here that's only getting two hundred dollars a year on? I mean, is, who, who's, who's watching this? I mean, and, and I'm not picking on the road department, but it's the largest of the budgets. And it's the easiest. And it nobody wants their budget cut. I understand that. But.
Nobody wants the taxes cut.
Not, you know, the wolf is watching.
And not saying that that would have happened, but you know, look at what happened last year. When all of a sudden some services were cut. How happy were people then, you know? I mean, I, I, and I'm not saying that.
Nobody ever explained to me how you saved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by not pulling road pitches when you got the equipment and you have to pay.
Yeah, well, I, what I'm just making a blank statement as we have services. If we have to cut something every now and again, that might be a cer- something might have to be cut.
Well, there needs to be some cuts made. Okay, well, we have a federal administration that is focused on cutting the bro- law, race, fraud and abuse. And if we have to go up almost thirty percent in taxes in the past two years, there's a problem. And so there needs to be some cuts made somewhere.
There's no, there's no way taxes, your taxes went up thirty percent.
Last year it was thirteen percent and again it's thirteen, fourteen percent this year.
Excuse me, my name is Jim Hartson. I moved here.
If, if you're gonna speak, let's have one person speak at a time.
I moved here in two thousand twenty-one. My property tax was a little over eight hundred dollars. The new, latest was a little over eleven hundred. I don't know, do the math, but it's thirty some percent. I don't get it because I haven't gotten any more services. They didn't mow the ditch around my house. Okay? And y'all are sitting up here talking these numbers and you gotta start looking at who you're servicing. And why you're raising those dollars, period. You don't have to raise dollars. You go to your departments, excuse me, and you ask them to take a three percent and figure out three percent productivity. They are, they work on productivity. We work on dollars. You've got to cut the, increase the productivity if you want more dollars. That's all I'm saying.
And as far as your property valuations going up, that's not something that the board of supervisors is. I mean, we're, we're not the ones saying you're gonna get a ten percent property evaluation increase.
I've got the same house, I've got the same piece of property and it's gone up thirty percent.
I realize that.
Where did the money go? That's the question I ask. It's only three hundred dollars. I don't have three hundred to go out and drop ones on the sidewalk out here.
No, I understand. And my property's done the same. What were you gonna say?
Well, I, I guess, I was just gonna say the, the assessed values that your properties are being valued at are, um, set by the assessor's office. But if we, if the state finds that we are not within a range of what they deem appropriate, they will come through and do a reevaluation. So our, our numbers have to be relatively close to the market figures. And that's one of the things that has definitely been an impact through the last couple of years with inflation and all that. If you look at actual sale data, that's, that's what those numbers.
You're talking, you're talking, uh, about a house being, or a piece of property being X number of dollars. And that's going up. Why does the, the, uh, taxes have to go up when the productivity is going down? Explain that to me. Explain it to me. Why, if your services are being reduced, your taxes are going up because you, you talk about the house or a piece of property going up? Why, explain that to me.
Productivity of what going up?
Productivity of your workers. Productivity of your, of your copy machine. If you've got a copy machine that is eating up toner, you might want to get a new one because that one isn't working correctly. If you've got, they were talking about, uh, contracts over here. You've got people that, those contractors will continue to do what you allow them to do. If you put your boot in their butt and tell them that they're over budget or they're over time. You all and the department heads are the ones that need to make that happen, not us. We can sit here all day and talk about it, but y'all are the ones that put the contracts out. Have your department heads and they go, well, he won't work with us anymore. So what? Send his butt packing, pardon my French. Cause I'm not happy right now. Last year's, last year's.
True.
Yep, and if. Thank you.
On machinery expenses, when you guys do machinery expenses, shall I go back to Nutrient? I'm sure they're the same way. Do you ever ask for more than one quote? Do you make them turn in three quotes every time? That's the way my job is. I don't care what I buy. I gotta have three bids.
And, and Charlie, and I was gonna make a comment about that too is in the boardroom, we've gone around and around, I mean, I've gone around and around with, with our engineer too. With can we get quotes from other companies or not? And, and we have gotten quotes. The last couple of times that we've gotten quotes, I think it's been one from Ziegler and one from Altris, but they're both caterpillar dealers. And.
But aren't you guys in control of the road department? Are you the boss?
So I, I, I mean, that is discussions that we've had. It's just, I haven't, I haven't ever seen quotes.
I don't think the problem here is totally raising the taxes, it's cutting the spending.
So, so you got.
They're raising the taxes, it'll take care of itself if you cut the spending.
So all I hear about is economic development. I'm talking about the field, about the measure of economic development is your county, is your, is your county growing? We're losing, lost three percent people last year. You have no economic development. And you want economic, economic development, stop hammering us as hard as you're hammering us. Uh, we'll spend that money. Don't you worry. Let us spend it. We don't want you to spend it. We don't have economic development in this county. We're losing people. And so when you tax, that raises it exponentially on the ones that are left. And it's getting tougher and tougher. Not only is it a tax, we're not covering the three percent people that are missing too. And, and it's a trend, it's a trend that's continuing. So this economic development you talk about, you have no leg to stand on because you're doing nothing towards economic development.
That is, your auditor came in. Didn't she bring in over a hundred line item things that she had questions about? It may not have been wrong, but didn't she have a, a list of pages that she went through saying, uh, we got?
Are you talking about our third party audit? Okay.
She had a lot of pages of questionable line items.
Although that, there wasn't really, there really wasn't a whole lot. I mean, it's a, it's a book, but like any, any regulatory procedure, there's a lot of pages, but, um, there's really not a lot of findings in that.
Right, the findings, there's only a, a couple of pages and they're listed out. And there's some findings that will always be in there. And then there's the findings that are a little bit more specific to things that, you know, they, they did love.
Correct, yep, yep. Do you guys still want me to read the fund balances?
Yeah.
We got the numbers.
Okay. I saw a few heads shake, yes, okay.
Do you have any questions on that?
At the, yeah.
What are the projected fund balances? Do you want to review?
Projected fund.
For all of them?
When you do your budget, you'll have that.
Yep, yep. Give us one second here, Don.
So these go, these go all the way?
Give, give us one second here, wait, just, just one second. So, so for the ending fund balance, June thirtieth for general basic is estimated to be three million, four hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. That's our estimated ending fund balance for general basic. For rural, or excuse me, for general supplemental, then our ending fund balance is looking, uh, we're looking at one million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars.
What does general supplemental mean?
General supplemental means it, it's just, it's another tax levy that's general meaning to every resident or every property owner in the county.
Only certain things can.
Rural would be, you know, a rural service levy would be to all those outside of the incorporated areas. Um, for the rural services, our fund balance at the June thirtieth this year will be one million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Projected and then I think. We can, yeah, why don't you open EMS? Looking at six hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Are there any others we'd like us to look up?
Just what happened to, at the secondary road?
Secondary road fund?
What?
Okay.
Transfer every month usually from general basic and dual basic.
So June thirtieth for secondary road.
Yeah, with property tax.
We're looking at four million, three hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars is an ending fund balance. Four, three, nine, zero, nine, three, four.
So is this money on interest or is it?
No, this is, this is money.
Is it necessary to have that much?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes.
So.
Yes, the short answer, yes, it is.
Yeah.
Cause you don't, you're gonna, you aren't gonna collect more money in taxes until three months later. And inflation goes up, you gotta have, it's gonna take more.
We don't have, we don't have credit with any of our vendors?
Probably not.
It's a state, it's, it's a state that they've always said twenty-five percent of your fund balances in expenditures you should have at the end of every fiscal year to make sure that you can continue to operate and do business. That's the general rule of thumb for not only to see county, all counties.
Yeah, it's, and it's, it's not say.
Why, I'm not saying it gotta be zero.
Hey, so the, the fundamental reason behind that is because our fiscal year ends at the end of June. And with taxes coming in in the fall, you need three months worth. So that's twenty-five percent of a year. So it's, it's a time factor for most of that. Um, that's really the simplest way to explain it. It's a time factor.
How close to that do you get dipped into? I've never gotten those answers.
Well, the trend is down. And we don't, you don't, you don't like, you and I, nobody likes that. Nobody likes the trend going down. That means we're spending more than we're, than we're taking in. So the trend is down. It's not good. You want it to trend lower? You don't. I know you don't. I know you don't want it to trend lower.
Actually, what's happening?
The answer is spend less. What do you want to cut? People come through here every day, every day, every week, want more. What do you want to cut? The, you talked about a secondary road. The, the engineer was in here and said, what, what pavement do you want us to tear up? And return to gravel, that'll save us money. What bridge do you not want us to replace? The one that goes by your house? I don't care a whole lot about that. The one that goes by my house, I do care a whole lot about.
The engineer, and he, he does, uh, how do I say this? He pouts when he doesn't get his way and he throws those options out here. But there's other options besides tearing up a road to put under gravel road.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can plow roads slower and, and not as efficiently. And we can put less gravel on it, but when that doesn't happen, there's a line of people complaining about that also.
So plowing slower, like Grady probably wouldn't hurt because he wouldn't have so many ruts. You know, cause when you go too fast, then it gets the mountain and I can tell you, I go with me and Jen for Ancon County years and years ago. So I know what causes ruts.
So there's.
I don't know, we got to talk about the ruts.
I don't know. We were talking about roads.
So there's no, there's no place in the county's budget to save any money. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, that's not what you're hearing. Really? Our, it was my understanding that our tax asking was gonna go up four and a half percent. I don't know what every individual pieces was, but our tax asking was gonna go up four and a half percent. Is it too much? It probably is. It probably is too much. But if it was three percent, I'd be damn proud. I'd be damn proud if we held it to three percent. You know what the cost of machinery is. You know what the cost of machinery is. You know what the cost of people is. Our, excuse me.
Well, the, the, the highest thing I can just ask, three more percent on my corner, that is.
You weren't, you weren't in here five years ago when you were making record amounts of money saying, please tax me more.
I think, I think I was.
I don't think you were saying, please tax me more.
Your poll videos?
Probably, yeah.
They're not saying tax more.
I'd like to see that, but, hey, it, it, I, I know, I'm in the same, I'm in the same business you are. It, it just, it just, if it was three percent, you wouldn't like it and I would be proud. I'm not proud of four and a half, but I'd be proud of three.
So a lot of times for us, and I'll use us as an example.
I'd like to make an example.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd like to make an example. Where I live, there was an old bridge there that was still working really well. They put in a cement bridge, fixed it all up good. That was several years ago. And I said, why are you doing that? You don't need to. And they said, well, because the mailman has to go on that road, which he doesn't. The bus has to go on the road, which it doesn't. And it's only people that are enjoying the area that go on that road. I pay my taxes and every year, the snowplow comes to my driveway and stops. And I think it says that if there's people living on that mile, they need to clean it. And there's maesters on one side and the reeds on the other side. And they take it to my driveway and they stop. I, I don't understand. You guys are talking about all this. There's so many things that are going on that you guys are getting fixed, need better. And really, it's okay to let it go for a little while. Does that make sense to you? Because nobody goes on my road except hunters. You know, or people that like to look at the outdoors. We really didn't need to spend all that money back then. And I think there's a lot of places now that they probably don't need to spend that money.
From what I understand, the costs of, you know, doing some of these road projects and bridge projects has gone up so much that stuff is not getting done. Because the money, yeah, we're trying to give what we can so that that service stays and we get as much done as we can. But that money, just say it's four million dollars. That four million does not go as far as it did even two or three years ago. Well, so things aren't getting done.
I'm still paying my taxes.
That are getting left.
And I don't have roadwork done on my road the way it should be done. Why should my taxes go up? Why should my taxes go up?
Right now, just for information, it's about a hundred thousand per inch, per mile of blacktop is about what the going rate of, of blacktopping is at the moment. That doesn't get you very far when you're spending a million dollars on a road. But, and that's part of the reason for why we've pushed certain projects back in the five-year plan. Because a bridge that costs three hundred fifty, four hundred thousand is now six hundred fifty, seven hundred thousand. It just.
But we've got some additional income coming in the next few years to address that.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's not.
That's, that's not here yet.
But there is some more income coming.
Are you talking windmills?
And only for that. So when does this vote take place? Or how does it happen?
Not until that budget.
Right.
Yeah, not until the budget hearing, which they're, they, uh, next week they'll set the date and time, but um, I'm hoping it's gonna be April 22nd at eight thirty.
So is the, so is the Board of Supervisors ready to have the hard conversation with all these department heads? And tell them, we need more, we need to cut our budgets in, and I, you pick the number and maybe it's different, you know, maybe it's not cut across the whole board. And, and, uh, and, and that's what the budgets are gonna be and there ain't no coming back. There ain't no coming back and getting it all later after everybody's gone by the wayside and stopped coming in for the budget meetings and complaining. We do it all the time. Farmin's been some of the greatest years in the last five that it's ever been. And you know what? We were still trying to cut. Because everything is so expensive. I mean, a, a sweater that used to cost us twenty-five thousand dollars a year now costs us, in a lease now costs us a hundred.
Same applies to dump trucks, backhoes and.
And you know what?
Snowplows.
Sorry, but you're gonna have to wait just another day for your product. It, it's just the way it is. You, you can't do it all in one day. And I can't afford to do it for you in one day. And I think, you know what? The, the whole, you can't move all the snow in one day, you're not doing it in one day anyway. And you know what? If the school has to cancel one more day because you didn't get out there and, and move the roads one more time. Maybe it's hard surface only, then people have to get to it. Maybe that's the way it is. It's the middle of winter, it's a blizzard.
Year-round.
It's the way it is. I mean, we cannot continue to have ten percent tax increases.
You're not, you're not having ten percent tax increases. You individually may, but the county is not having a ten percent tax increase.
We, we cannot continue to spend.
I, if Wade, Wade, and, and anyone else, if we could, if you could try and respect, if you do wish to make comments or you have questions, please do come up to the podium. Um, just for better order here.
Takes a little bit, I'm here. We've listened for an hour. I, my question is this. There's been a lot of discussion with different folks. Has anything been said or each individual of the supervisor? Have you heard anything that you're now thinking in your mind, you're going to try to change it? Or is it a blank situation? I'd like to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one more comment, I gotta go back to work.
Okay.
Your largest expense is the road department, correct? Correct. I mean, we got Roger Fisher here from the Sheriff's Department. He's concerned about his budget, I'm sure, that's why he's here. But where's our road department guy? The biggest expense we have and he's not here. Any formal meeting that I have where I work, your head of them departments are at your meeting. Why is he not here?
He's out of the office this week.
So, why would you have this meeting without him?
Don't.
When we have the budget hearing, the department heads are always there. And they're there to answer questions in regards to their individual budgets if, if there are questions for that. This isn't necessarily about individual budgets. This is about the tax askings to take care of those budgets.
I think you guys would all agree that usually where you look to cut funds is in your largest department. I think you guys would agree with that. I know that's the way it is in every business I've ever worked in. You look for the most funding that's being spent and figure out what you can do there.
This isn't about expenses, this is about income.
So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else on the board wanna respond to Morris? Otherwise I will.
I'd like his question answered.
That's, that's what we're getting to right now. Uh, what was that, Karen?
Does anyone else on the board wanna respond to Morris's question? Otherwise, I can. If no one else wants to.
Go first, that's fine.
I guess there's, there's a couple of things I would bring to mind and I guess one of them I've already mentioned. Equipment in the secondary road department has been a conversation that I've talked about more than once. Another thing we talked about substantially this year was health insurance for employees. I know that's not a fun conversation, but part of our budget is a fifteen percent increase in contribution. And that directly reflects in the levy rates, which is what we're here to talk about today. But, um, there are definitely things that I am open to addressing and I guess my opinion is I wish we would've changed some of those prior to today, but that was not the majority of the board's decision. But my opinion is I do think there are things that we could change. So, that's my quick response to you, I guess, um, in those couple topics.
There, there is a difference between can and will.
Oh. I would if there was board support to do that. It, it does take a majority of the board to do.
I'm aware.
Changes.
And I, I mean, I can go next, as far as, and that's fine, and, and, uh, I mean, we, I sat here, or a couple of weeks ago and said, are there any further changes that the board would like to make? Or is this the numbers that we would like to submit, that we would like to have Tammy publish? Is everyone good with this moving forward? And, and everyone on the board said yes. And so, I guess what are, if we're looking to make further changes, what are those changes that we didn't already discuss in budget time? Or did we already discuss them? And I, you know what I'm saying? It's.
I guess those two examples I used were already discussed, so I didn't rehash them because they'd already.
Sorry, equipment and.
Both of those things I mentioned, yeah.
And the discussion during budget for, for equipment was moving money out of equipment and into construction, from what I, from what I remember.
That was a part of it, but not all of it.
But either way, that's where it ended. So, as far as making changes, I, I guess I would, I'd be, I mean, I wasn't aware of certain things like spending eighty-seven thousand to fix a bump in the road. That's a question to ask. But I, I'm not, I'm not sure what in particular the board would like to cut. So, I mean, we, we, we've been through this a couple of months and that's. I was happy it was a, we, this, this budget year went a lot better than last. We were looking at a lot less, in, lot less of an increase off the bat than last year. And with the rising cost of things, kind of like Howard said, not proud of four and a half percent, but it's, we're, we're one budget of, of, of many on the levies.
Yeah. So all those things that you, uh, took off last year and reinstated, did you address any of those this year in the budget? Did you just stay with status quo or did you, for instance, economic development? Uh, I remember the library board, I remember the healthcare, I remember the, uh, all these budgets that you said were gonna get cut and, and freeze the, the wages? Did you freeze the wages last year? Did they hold?
Yes, yes, we did. We gave a zero, we gave a zero percent to last year. This is, we're talking last year, Dick. Yep, yep.
I mean, you came back and changed EMS's after the budget.
No, EMA, EMA.
That was EMA. And EMA is a separate tax levy that the Board of Supervisors does not have authority to, to regulate. So that, that's.
And that is also going up again this year.
Correct.
Substantially, I would say.
But we, we gave a zero percent last year. We, employees now, instead of paying zero dollars towards their family health plan, they're paying two hundred and fifty dollars a month. That's three thousand a year.
That was last year.
That was last year's change. As far as consideration of economic development, whether to cut economic development or not, this year, we did not cut economic development, uh, out of the budget. And the libraries have stayed as they are as well, based on last year's same number. They were not increased, they were just carried over in the same number. And as far as the fair board goes, I remember that was another substantial item in the twenty-five or thirty thousand. That, that was last year. That was reinstated. That, that was also left in the budget for this year. In answer to your questions for.
And actually increased it.
So, for the fair board, what the board is, what the board's decided for the fair was that we were going to contribute fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund towards the grandstand project for this budgeted fiscal year. The board has committed, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the span of five years. When in that five years is not, that, that's not determined, but that's what the board has committed towards that project.
I got one, I, I get bewildered. You said our taxes are going up four percent.
I did not say that.
Okay, well, I said, if the tax asking, we took the total from last year, the total from this year. For the budget that we control, it's up four and a half percent. So where's this number coming from?
So, that, and I think it was explained a couple of times in the beginning of this hearing, but that sheet very specifically shows a ten percent increase in valuation. So it is assuming that your property goes up ten percent in value plus the change in millitrates. So, like I said, two of those levies are going down, general supplemental is going up. But if your tax assessed value stays the exact same, your taxes going out from the county are gonna be in that four and a half percent increase, ballpark. But that sheet, which was laid out in House File seven eighteen, that structure and what we put on that is mandated by the state. We have to show a ten percent increase in valuation as an example. So, if your property stays the same, you're gonna see four and a half. If your property goes up twelve percent in valuation, you're gonna see higher than what's on that paper. It all depends on your specific property. And, and that's why that sheet is printed the way it is, because it has to show a ten percent valuation change as an example.
Um, there, yeah, there is a place online and with the Department of Management that you can go and plug in. So you can get an estimate on what your specific property taxes are going to be. It won't include some of the smaller things like the assessor and, and EMA. But it will give you a rough idea of what your individual property taxes would be. I know, it, it is confusing. I, I get the statements too. It, it's confusing to look at all that and how does this apply to me? Because it, it really doesn't explain it. And that's not Tammy's fault or, you know, that's, or ours, or, and that's just what we're mandated to send out.
I've heard.
Morris, yep.
Two of the supervisors answer my question. Are the three gonna answer or not?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer. I was just kinda waiting my turn.
Go ahead.
So, the question is, are we willing to change anything?
Are you going to change anything?
Well, yes. Same thing. It, these are my words. So are, are we willing to change anything? So when, when we go through the budget, we go through, we went through every single department. Every single department had sat in here. There's not big increases for those departments. I mean, those departments have kept things as close to status quo as possible. And we do ask them when they come in here to come in here with what they feel they absolutely need in order to run their department. You know, probably the only increases, I shouldn't say the only increases, some of the increases that we've seen are for wages. Yeah, last year they got zero. Um, this year, four percent. That you will see as a change. And when that changes, it also changes in the general supplemental, which is where the benefits are paid. When I say benefits, I mean the social security, the Medicare and the health insurance and the IFRS. Okay, that, those come out of that general supplemental fund. That's where we've seen an increase. We did see an increase in the health insurance. Uh, one thing that we've talked about going forward is having meetings with our employees, telling them that we can't keep raising taxes to pay for the health insurance. I mean, we have to make changes. Last year was a good step in that direction, which the employees paid two hundred fifty dollars. This year.
A month?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes. Yes.
Three thousand.
Yes. Um, we have talked about, you know, more change with that, possibly going to a higher deductible plan. But not dumping it in the laps of the employees, actually giving them the opportunity to come in here and learn about it and figure out what it's gonna be so they have a point. Now, not everybody agrees with taking care of the employees because honestly, every time I turn around, they're saying, oh, you need to take this, take this, take this. It's easier said than done if you're sitting in this chair. So as far as changing anything, I really don't know as a board, that will be a decision this board will make together, whether or not we are gonna go back and crunch any numbers, because we spent a long time on the budget trying to get it in a good place. And I feel like we left it in a good place. I, I don't wanna raise taxes as much as you don't want them raised. But we have to operate. And the way things are going right now in the world, everything is more expensive. We are dealing with more expensive with less money. So as far as going back, yeah, if the, this whole board wants to go back, I'll go back and I will, I'll look at things differently. But I feel like we did a very good job trying to get to a good place.
Yeah, I guess I'd echo some of the things that have already been kind of said is, um, you know, I, I'd love to see the expenditures go down and, and there are some areas that can be looked at. But taking those expenditures down in the area of, you know, construction, uh, equipment, things like that. If we hold off on purchasing equipment, you know, you, you look at that same piece of machinery a year later, how much more is it gonna be? So, um, you also have to look at it in, in the aspect of, you know, where is it gonna go after this? If we put off buying that equipment, put off building that bridge, put off paving that road, you know, redoing that road, it's gonna cost that much more the next year to do that same road as it is this year. I'd love to, to, you know, reduce the expenditures, but at the cost of cutting services, I have a hard time doing that.
To answer the specific question, are we gonna go back and change, I think, change what we've worked on? I doubt it. I, 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 I don't think we will. I think what you see is what you're gonna get for the next year.
Part of my question was, was during an hour's worth of conversation, was anything said here? And to have you change your mind about doing this? That was part of it. Otherwise, as was said, I didn't, this may not be a waste of time. But from what we're hearing, nothing accomplished.
Well, you give us, you give me, anyway, good ammunition for the next time. I'm, I'm gonna remember it and, and, uh, and try to take it into account, but it's, it's insurance, and you all, you all know this from home. It's insurance.
We all have that.
What?
We all have that.
Absolutely. We all have it. And I'm, you believe this or not, my house insurance, I, I changed something, but it went up fifty percent. My, my notice came and it went up fifty percent. You can be sure all the county buildings insurance went up too. The health insurance went up. I think the discussion was good. I wish, I, I hope everybody in the, that works for the county goes home and watches the video. And I hope they remember it a year from now, or nine months from now. I don't think it was a waste of time. I think it was good. Is it gonna change anything for this year? In my mind, me only, probably not. No, it's not.
So how are you gonna increase your, uh, revenue at home? You don't have the luxury of raising.
I'm gonna quit.
I mean, all the rest of us don't have the luxury just to turn up the juice and make a little bit more money. We don't. And we've got health insurance, and we've got, uh, in-house insurance, and car insurance, and, and everything. We don't have, we don't have the luxury to turn this stuff up.
Well, and if I can say one more thing, everything said in this room, trust us, that's on our minds when we're sitting here. You guys didn't mention anything that we haven't thought about this entire time of doing this budget. This entire time. There is nothing that you have said that we haven't thought about. There's nothing that you have said that we're not going to consider every single time we make a financial decision.
So.
That's what I got.
My next question, my next question.
Wade, if, if you're gonna continue to ask questions, I'd appreciate it if it came up, came up to the podium. I can't see it.
We'll have everybody else see you.
So, I guess, you're gonna raise taxes for the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, that's.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-six, excuse me. So twenty-six, twenty-seven? We'll be getting, uh, more revenue from windmills? So will we see a, uh, 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 tax relief is probably not gonna be, probably not that, but are we going to see where you're not going to increase our taxes? Going forward for the next, how many years is it?
Twenty.
That the money comes in? Twenty. It increases for the next twenty, right?
No.
No.
It, there's basically a seven-year stair step. It's zero percent the first year, then five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, and they cap at thirty and maintain at thirty. Thirty percent of their net acquisition cost. So it's, it's a stair step in the beginning, and then five.
So is this the last year of raising taxes on everybody? Due to the fact that Howard.
No.
Didn't you run on that?
No.
The, and the quick answer to that though too is the, the money that's coming in from those TIF would only designate towards certain areas, and that would be
I know it, it's to the roads.
And so that means you cut the road expense on, on, on our side. And I'd love to say that that would reduce their, our tax asking, but we don't know where the other areas are gonna be. You're asking us to have a crystal ball to know where our health insurance is gonna be, nowhere, you know.
To know what the state is going to.
You can overuse the health insurance so many times.
Okay, well, we can, and we can look at.
But you cannot continue. You're going to be getting X amount of dollars. I think it's fifteen million over the next ten years? I, I don't have my numbers in front of me. That's gonna go into the budget.
What it is, what it is, the full value should be in a ballpark of three million a year in the TIF.
Three million, to go to the road department.
Well, to whatever is listed on those projects. So the majority of that is road.
Road department, so.
And we could do an amendment.
That three million, when, when everybody signed up for these windmills and whatnot, it was gonna be a great source of revenue for taxes. I'm not gonna argue whether that's, that is worth three million dollars, but the income should offset some of the road department. So potentially, for the next few years, we should see flat taxes, potentially.
It'll never happen.
And, and we can, and we can talk potentials as far as what we would potentially receive from the, the TIF areas. The reality is that's not where we're at this year, in this budget year, as far as offsetting those costs. I mean, that's certainly.
I think, I think you guys gotta lay it out here what this year's gonna look like.
Right.
And it's not gonna change. Everything that we've said here today, everything that was said, it's not gonna change. So that's why I'm looking towards next year, and maybe the year previous. But it, it just looks that, that we're going to stay like sailors on leave and we're gonna spend like drunken sailors for as long as we can.
From our side of the chart, that's what it looks like, basically. Well, I know it's a small part of the budget, but when we're doing our expenditures, one of the things we have to look at is, is there a return on investment? And I know this is a small part of the budget, but I've never agreed with, uh, spending money on the economic development office. I've never agreed with that. I don't believe it returns on investment. And the way, the only criteria for return on investment is, are you bringing people into the county? And this county has been shrinking for twenty years at, at a rate of about three percent. There's no economic development. Where's your return on investment? These are the things you have to ask when you're sitting up there. Do we have a return on our investment? Are we getting a bang for our buck? And sometimes I question whether these guys are doing that.
If the county's money went to the lights on the, on the library here in town, you better find somebody to give you the warranty for that. That's a joke. But that economic development, I'll kick in. A few years ago, when I was still running the garbage truck, there was five gentlemen at the hotel down here, brought in for economic development. They took them around and showed them things. They were trying to entice them to come to the town, and they lined them and dined them. And the day after they left, when I flipped the lid on the dumpster, five booklets of information were in the dumpster. They didn't even put it in their car and take it home with them. That's a waste of resources, 'cause we paid for everything when those five guys were in town.
Yep, I, I think we've heard most of what everyone has to say here today. Unless someone has anything new, or they're dying to add, but, uh, I'll entertain one last opportunity for public comment. And otherwise, I would take a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, we have a motion by Stecker to close the public hearing. Second by Garmin. Any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? If not, roll call vote, please.
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes. Okay, thank you all for coming in today, and appreciate your time and comments. And I'll need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Wachter. Motion by Haas. And any discussion? Or all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.